Good evening. We have a quorum. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Barry Roberts. You're not Barry.
Good evening. I'm here with Barry tonight to request an amendment to a condition in the permit for the East Street condominiums. Paragraph 7D has a condition that, "In each phase, applicant will not be eligible for certificate of occupancy until the affordable dwelling unit in each phase has been identified and documented on the record to satisfy the planning board and qualified for the Massachusetts inventory of affordable housing." And as I think you all know, we've had some difficulty with finding somebody to administer the program. The bylaw requires that the Hadley Housing Authority administer that program, but they've indicated that they don't have the resources, the wherewithal, or the expertise to administer the program. So we've been seeking other ways to do it. And frankly, the private administrators that we've spoken to, agencies, are very expensive. It would cost us in the range of $65,000 to employ them to do that. So we've been looking at different ways to deal with the affordable issue. Not that we want out of it, we're just trying to figure out how to deal with it. And we've come to the point where Barry needs some certificates of occupancy. So we're requesting that that portion, or that condition of the permit, be amended. There are a couple of ways to do it. First of all, he has decided that he's not building in phases. You may have noticed he's building the whole project out now. So he's putting in all our infrastructure, all the roads, all the drainage, the water sewer. So it's not being done in phases. So we looked at the bylaw and thought that maybe we could play off of the inclusionary bylaw, which does provide for a couple of things. One of it is, one is that the inclusionary bylaw provides for a payment in lieu of the affordability of the affordable unit. And it's basically a payment to the satisfaction of the planning board based upon an average cost of construction, together with an average cost of land and infrastructure for the area. So we put together the numbers that, you know, in all honesty, can't be totally accurate because there's, you know, ebb and flow in the infrastructure costs still. But basically what we came up with was that, once you figure that number, the cost of the per square foot construction and the acquisition in infrastructure, we come up with a number. And basically, what we're looking at is the affordable units were going to be 1,042 square feet. We're guessing it's $115 a square foot to build the unit, and about $110,000 per unit for land and infrastructure costs. So when you multiply that all out, it comes to about $229,830. We then subtract out the amount of money that we're allowed to sell those units for, which is $157,000 now, and we come up with a number of $72,800. And that's basically what he would be contributing to the affordable housing in Hadley. So one of our proposals would be that we multiply that number by five, and we come up with about $360,000. That that be paid either to a housing trust fund, or to the town of Hadley, or to the Hadley Housing Authority as a contribution towards future affordable housing. We think it's a great way for the town to deal with it. They then control it, and they have the ability to build, or buy, or subsidize rents, or do whatever it is that the town feels is in the best interest of Hadley. So our proposal would be that the board allow us to make a $72,830 payment, times five, for each affordable unit, to satisfy that requirement. We are to the point where we need some occupancy permits, so we would like you to consider that. Also, in the inclusionary bylaw, it provides a schedule. Whereas what we had done was taken 15% of Phase 1, 15% of Phase 2, 15% of Phase 3, we can't do that any longer because we're not doing it in phases. So what the inclusionary, your inclusionary bylaw calls for is, for at 30% plus one unit, then you give a third of the units. And there's a schedule in there for how it goes up. So our 30% is 11 units. So one of our requests is that you amend that condition to allow us to satisfy it either with the payment in lieu, or with a unit, and that we do those units in accordance with your schedule in the inclusionary bylaw, which is basically the, less than 30%, it doesn't trigger anything, at 30% plus one unit, which for us would be 11 units, then 10% of the affordables, up to 50%, 30%, and your chart goes on up. So what we're looking for is a release of, at least, or a release of 11 units for certificates of occupancy, and that we would pay or build in accordance with the schedule in the inclusionary bylaw. It's been fairly tough. It's been tough trying to figure out how to get this done. Frankly, Barry spends a lot of time on the construction part, but he has met with members of the select board, he's met with the town manager, he's met with interested parties, just trying to figure out a way to get this done in a reasonable fashion. And it's just expensive if they're going to be on the inventory. So, that's what we'd like. We'd like to amend that portion, that paragraph 7D of the supplementary conditions to allow us to obtain some certificates of occupancy now, and to either pay or build in accordance with the schedule of the inclusionary bylaw. Now, we know, or we think, that within the next six months or a year, the town may propose a affordable housing trust fund in town meeting. May pass, may not, we don't know. We would guess that their requirements would be similar to the inclusionary bylaw requirements, but we really don't know. But we need a resolution so that we can sell some units.
Interesting. We've talked about this, Mr. Roberts, come in a couple of times. We're not new to this, obviously.
Correct.
And we talked to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, our representative, Larry Smith. And he echoed the, what you said, and he echoed Mr. Roberts' concern that other communities have done this, and he actually went to a, I don't want to follow a meeting, but they had a group where they had the affordable group, and they had the, not that affordable, but they had the Chapter 40B, if you would, group out of the state, and then they had the group that was in charge of the, I'm not sure exactly which ones it was, Bill.
It was the people on the zoning side and the people on the housing side.
Right. And anyways, and the zoning side were subject for the inclusionary, and the state side was, no, we don't want the state to have anything to do with doing that. And so now, they suddenly got real, real-life experience. Well, one hand, we want it, but on the other hand, we're not going to support it with our own people. And how do you get the void filled? And they said it's also very expensive. They, they didn't have an, they didn't have a cure, and I doubt they're going to have anything soon. And I think the trust fund, very much like the TDR fund that we use, is probably the best way to address this by simply getting a fund together, having the town utilize it in an appropriate manner. And we tried putting that in when the inclusionary bylaw was passed, but for some reason, it was concerning that we would give the Housing Authority an open checkbook. But we've had a TDR fund for years, and the conservation does not have an open checkbook. They need two-thirds majority to pull out of it. I don't see why we couldn't do the same thing with an inclusionary fund.
Yeah.
So Peter, you're presenting us with two alternatives. A sum of money to go into the trust fund, or building the units later on.
Yes. To be, to be honest with you, our dilemma is twofold. One is, we haven't solved the affordability issue yet.
Well...
We know what it is, but we're working on it. And we can't solve it immediately. Yet, we have some units that are ready for sale, and we can't get certificates of occupancy until we satisfy it. So, I mean, to be honest with you, we can do one of three things. You could, that would be good for us. You could say tonight, yep, we'll go by that schedule in the inclusionary bylaw, so you can get some certificates of occupancy now. That's our desirable, but least desirable. What we'd really like to do is to be able to take section 25.7.1 of the inclusionary bylaw, and say, that's what we're going to do. We're going to either pay that number, which by my math is $72,830 per unit, that's what he's losing per unit, and that check comes at $360 or, to the town. The bylaw, this bylaw allows for it, and that's what we'd like to do. If the, if the board were to say, well gee whiz, I don't know, we're happy to keep discussing how we do that, but to me, that seems like an easy answer. It's a big amount of money. Better than giving somebody $65,000 to advertise from Rattleboro to Hartford for people to come and occupy these, because I think the affordable ones will be occupied quite easily. Because we do have to sell them for $157,000.
Well, my concern is that you're mixing two separate bylaws. And they were adopted more than 10 years apart, and they have different histories. What I am willing to do is, I would be prepared to make a motion to release, to authorize release of up to 11 certificates of occupancy before addressing affordability. And I would like to invite you back to our next meeting, which will be August 5th, where we will be, we already are scheduled to meet with...
It's not the first?
No.
No, that's September.
Oh, September, okay.
You've got to reverse.
Okay. August 5th. I don't have an August page in here.
Yes, you do. It's the list page. July, September, August.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, they've got to put this together, put it together backwards.
Okay.
We usually do do them in a particular order.
It's, it's kind of free form sometimes. So, August 1st. So Larry Smith is going to be here from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who will be working with us on trying to merge or reconcile these two sections anyway. It is in the master plan update as something that we wanted to work on. And I, I just don't want to try to think through all of the consequences of agreeing to accept the cash deposit without being 100% sure that we have authority to accept it.
That's, because I think when you put the senior bylaw in, we don't, that was, that's not in there.
Yeah, I think my argument would be, it's in the bylaw.
Yeah, I know. And I, I agree with Bill on this one, that you're in a hurry, we can give you what you want right now, very easily, and we can work on the actual long-term method, like Bill said.
Do, I assume we believe that somebody's going to put the trust fund before town meeting either this fall or in the spring?
That's our goal, yes.
And will it be the board, the planning board who does that, or will it be the select?
Yes, it'll be us.
Yep.
Because it'll be, it'll be a zoning bylaw.
And what is the, what's the deadline for that? Do we know?
The fall town meeting is end of Oct, end of October, usually. So usually, we have until early September to get it. We have about two months to get that going.
The select board has been very comfortable letting us reserve an article or two even after the warrant officially closes.
Just to get, get, we reserve a spot and get them the word, get them the wording near the end of the actual posting.
Okay.
Well, first of all, we're not behind the eight ball according to the affordability, the numbers of affordable housing in Hadley. We are, actually have the highest percentage. We've got 11.5%.
He's got almost 13%.
No, 13, okay.
I think so. But yeah, you are...
So we're not behind the eight ball. We don't have to make that decision.
You are about 15.
And I would be in favor of giving you some time to build them where you're there, rather than take them...
Well, given, they need 11 right now. Give them the 11 they need. We can vote that tonight.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
You'll be back in a couple of weeks, with any luck. And if you need more between now and the actual, the actual voting on the warrant, come back and see us, and we can work on that. Hopefully, we'll have a solution by that time.
We hope I have that problem.
What's this total build out on that? How many units?
Thirty, what is it, 60? How many units are you building total, Barry?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five units. So... I'm really not for set and trust. I'd rather see him build affordable housing, and it's there.
I agree, yeah.
Because once it gets in there, and it gets other hands, God knows what's going to happen to it.
Well, what would be terrific is if somehow, you know, with all due respect, the Hadley Housing Authority could, you know, do whatever it is needs to be done. And I agree, it's complicated, and it's a lot of work, but it would be a good thing for both us and for, and future affordable housing, and a good thing for Hadley to be able to do that. But if it's going to be on subsidized inventory, this process has to happen.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we, is it going to be an agenda?
We've got a motion.
So I'll make a motion that the, make a finding that the proposed changes are not significant or major, and can be addressed without reopening the public hearing. And we are going to amend Condition 7D of the decision as approved February 2nd, 2016, to allow up to 11 certificates of occupancy to be issued without constructing affordable units. And we note that the phasing has been shelved, and all units are being built.
And will that be an agenda item, or an early item, or...
Yep. We'll put it as, an agenda item is under the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Thank you.
What kind of timeframe do you, do you need to build affordable housing? Say, you get these 11. The next block you're going to build is how many units?
Oh, I'm not sure. I'm building them as itself. Okay? I don't have...
What do you need for time to build an affordable...
We would just build it as we're going along. The real issue is how long is it going to, if, if going through the subsidized inventory, going through that state process, how long will that take? And I, I don't know.
Well, I don't either. That makes two...
But I, I can try to find out.
Okay. Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Abel, Sep?
I am with Edbeck Solar, and we have a solar array, a private solar array for a customer on 83 Rocky Hill Road. That is within 50 foot of a abutting property. So I have packets here with all the information, and I got a permission from the abutting property owner, and I just wanted to bring this to you to have it put to a vote, so it could be allowed or not.
This is a ground mounted system?
Yes, I apologize. The ground mounted solar system is like...
About how big?
It's a nine kilowatt, so it's about 66 by 40 feet.
Okay.
And there's also tons of information in the packets, if you'd like to open them up and have a look. But...
Yeah. We'll send them out for, this is administrative, it's been a, a ground mounted solar system. It's considered a small solar system.
Yep.
And only requires administrative review by us and other boards in town, but it does require that we give them, what is it, 60-day bill?
Ah, it's 35.
35 days, so...
Yep.
35, we could put you on the August, if that could be 35. It'll have to be the 1st of September meeting, September 5th, for administrative review.
Sure.
Okay?
No problem.
And that's 83 Rocky Hill...
83 Rocky Hill Road, yes.
Yeah, you should keep these and bring them back if they...
Would you like...
Well, no, we...
You can, you can look at those. I will distribute these to the other boards in town, but you can read, look, use these for yourself.
Yeah, I gave you nine copies as was explained to me by the town clerk.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope. So be back on September 5th.
Okay, sure thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David, Phil?
Certainly can discuss.
Okay.
Not participating.
A butter. Well, first of all, what are you asking us?
I'm asking to amend the definitive subdivision plan for the driveway location. The, on the plan that you have in front of you, the orchid lane that's shown, the 20-foot wide private lane, is what's approved in the definitive subdivision plan. What I'd like to do is install the shown 12-foot wide hard pack, single driveway leading out to the house, which includes a 40-foot long, 12-foot wide turnaround at the end to allow for emergency vehicle turnaround access and that sort of thing. So basically, what we're doing is shifting the driveway over with a slightly narrower driveway than what was approved on the original plan. That front non-buildable area is supposed to be for preservation of agricultural purposes, which you'll actually have a net gain in usable land there for the agricultural purposes with our single driveway rather than the private lane that was originally approved. In the packet, there's the certified mail receipts from the four abutters there, and as well as the two owners on either side of the driveway that said they have no objections pending planning board approval to the driveway shift location, as well as the letter that we sent to them explaining what we're looking to do.
We can amend anything in the subdivision except relocating the road. That requires reopening the public hearing. So, the good news is, we just need three votes.
He's not relocating the driveway. This will stay as everything says. All he's talking about is just putting the driveway here, but this will still stay there.
Yeah.
That will still be, that will still be the, that will still be the driveway of record. All he wants to do is, instead of putting the actual drive-in, it'll be moved over.
Centered on the street frontage.
But it, but it, but the, this will still be the legal, legal access.
Right now, that's on the boundary line?
Correct.
Then you want to shift it over how much?
Centered on the 72-foot street frontage, rather than all the way over to one side.
Roughly 30 feet.
Yeah.
Roughly 30 feet.
So what's wrong with that?
No, nothing wrong with that. I'm just, Bill's just saying, if we completely relocate the street over to here, we've got to reopen the, the hearing. But all he wants to do is leave the legal definition here, but just put the actual driveway here.
Correct. And just for your records, the, the owner of record on the plot plan for the parcel to the right is, is incorrect. The, the ones that signed off on it are the new owners. That, that piece that was owned by the Zaskys was sold since the plot plan was done. Yes, that's been, that's been sold.
I'm not sure we actually did have a physical, didn't have an actual conservation easement for the non-buildable area.
That just do, do, do you limit, do you limit it a lot as non-buildable? So the same thing on that, but can be used for agricultural purposes?
So the house is going to be...
Yeah. Which is where it is always going to be. Yeah, the house, the house location is not going to change by more than, well, there's a square where it could be.
Yeah, the square is kind of hard to see with the, the colors that the surveyor used.
He's going to put the house about within that square.
That turnaround is going to be in that same location, and then it's going to shoot out to the house?
Yeah, no. This driveway is going to come up straight with the parking lot up there. But this, this turnaround strictly is on paper only to make the satisfied zoning, the subdivision bylaw.
And the fire chief has no problem with that?
Correct. Yeah, because he approved the original one. He approved the original driveway coming up with a hammerhead turnaround.
Well, now it's not going to be there.
Well, it's going to be moved over with a, with a larger turnaround up here.
Yeah.
In that parking lot?
Yeah, yeah.
That pad in front of the driveway area, or the garage area, I should say, is 40 by 50.
Well, no, not even...
The original turnaround came up here with a, with a pull-in and a back-up for the fire truck.
Yeah.
And this new one, he's going to have a much air, larger area for...
Drive in and back in there and get out.
A much enlarged area for a fire truck to turn around in.
He agrees to that radius, the fire chief? Did you talk to him about it?
About the radius of the one that we put on...
The radius, to take the truck and back in, back around that.
Have you seen the fire chief about that, about that side turnaround and back in?
No. The 40 by 50 is what we put on there. It was based on the, the length of the truck and a turn radius, but we did not get approval from the fire chief on that.
So do we normally get approval from the fire chief for driveways?
Only for the turnaround, but this area for, for this turnaround, that's 40 by 50.
Correct. And then the, the little tail that sticks out there is 40 feet by 12.
That's bigger than this. This is 40 by, this is 40 by 12.
Something, well, something of a base.
Well, this, 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 this...
Will be able to handle it.
The turnaround that he's listed on here is 40 by 12 with roughly 12, I'm going to guess, this is, this is much bigger than what's on here. That's the turnaround that he had on here, 40 foot by 12 back-in with a, what is that, 12 foot by 20, and this is 40 by 50, with a much bigger turnaround. I mean, you can, you can ask the fire chief if you want, but I'm sure he's going to say that that's much bigger than what he means.
Okay, so you'll build the new driveway to the same standards that were set for the old one?
Yes, sir. The, the old plot plan had a proposed hard pack orchid lane there as the private way, and it'll be a hard pack as well, 12-foot wide, so, same, same dimensions as the original approval.
How many feet is that house off the road?
It's approximately, roughly 530 feet back.
Do we originally approve this as the date it's signed?
And this is going to be exactly the way you're going to do this?
Yes, sir.
I certainly would like just to pass that by the fire chief, make sure it's satisfactory with him.
Okay.
So that he's not going to do his thing more... I would, I would vote yes for contingent upon him saying, okay, if it's okay.
So are these two plans the same?
They are, one's just in grayscale because the colors were pretty bad.
Okay. And what's the revision date on this one?
This is the proposed revision on, on that one. If you flip a couple pages back, what was sent to the abutter, let's see, that was...
Well, now, what I want to do is, is, I want to make this an attachment.
Sure.
To the decision. So I just wanted to key into, uh...
June 28, 2017.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to amend the very small subdivision, which is, oh, probably should have Joe and Jim not participate, because we only need three votes. So I'll make a motion to amend the very small subdivision based on determination that the proposed changes are not major, and the change will be to relocate physical driveway as shown on plan dated 6/28/17. Contingent upon approval of the fire chief for new driveway design.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes 3, 0, and 2 extensions. Not participating.
And do I need to run that to the fire chief, or is that sent over from you?
If we get to the, or, stand there, we'll get you. Just have him, we'll send over the subject.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Mary Thayer.
I have plans for Lot and Hadley where our house is. There's also a letter from the IRS. Our house, I was explaining, maybe I was explaining it. My son would like to, his wife would like to build a house next to us on the side of our lawn. So we were thinking of the IRS, and I'm having to divide up the 6.2 acres to make it up.
So this is where?
We were.
This is your house right now? And this is, this is the hill right in front of you, right there, where you always see, you know, like, you know, breakdancing.
So we come over, it's like this to get down to, so we have to fringe. We actually almost went down, such a couple of, and we, we, we're here, and we have to go back down like that.
This whole lot is, you know, seven minutes.
Okay.
So I look at the 100 feet with the principal structure.
Well, 175 is all the way back. More than 175. Yeah. Oh.
Now, I think the actual lift requirement is 100 feet. It must be changed.
150.
For the box?
Yeah.
150 for the box later.
What's, what's this on the east side or on the west side?
That's on the, that's on the west side of the parking lot.
The river side?
Yeah, yeah.
Here's that one. Very old, very old. Barstow's is over here.
Mm-hmm.
And my house is here, but going on crime house.
Yeah, San Russes.
He's back here.
Well, this is the road that goes way out to the hills?
Yeah, this goes up to San Russes.
Oh. That's out of the flood plain?
It is, yeah.
Looking at the box grid? No, no, looking at something else.
This your son, is that?
Pardon?
Your son?
Yes. And on the house, on the south side, and the other side on the north side.
Is this Thirville?
Across from Barstow's.
Yeah, Barstow's, Thirville? Perfect. Give us some competition.
Well, the land's been in the family since 1747.
Been around for a while, you know?
North pocket from the front lot line and the rear of the principal structure. Said we have been prior point definitely, because have a lot of minimum width less than a minimum lot width required. Except that the planning board may, but has made, made but has not required to issue a special permit and provide a 6.2.2 to permit a lot to accommodate less than 75% of the minimum.
But the actual definition of width there is not the same as project.
This is the bylaw that had to do with the very, very narrow.
Yeah.
I believe we had to do the 175 because we're agriculture.
Pardon?
What's the issue? About 175 to 150?
Oh.
What's the zoning issue?
Okay. Rule 2, page 19, let the fate. Fronted you 175, but width is 150. So that's, okay. Just want to make sure that we're all set, that's all.
Yeah, Mike, the reason for the width, the width 150, used to be you could have 175 foot frontage, then it would narrow down, and you could not put a house on it without a special permit, so it, it, it was just a mechanism by which you could designate where the house would be if it were an unusually shaped lot. But this had more than enough.
So what am I going to do here? Joe's going to sign it, I'm going to sign it, Joe's going to sign it, and I'm going to ask you to carry it down to.
That's just fine.
You take it down whatever time.
Yeah.
Well, just start signing them that way and sending them this way. This is a big project, sending them this way.
So how are you going to keep here at that class?
Tim, um, that's my husband's brother.
That's one's not my, oh, do, oh, they need to sign this.
Yeah, this is.
Okay.
If anybody's here for the EverSource public hearing continuation, they have withdrawn, so we don't, we can do anything but accept a withdrawal.
Well.
Unless you have been voted hard, Mike.
Well, I think, I think we should, uh...
Celebrate?
Well, have a drink.
What do you think this is, a wild west?
Well, I just want, I just want to point something out to you, that if we ask enough questions, that we can probably accomplish things. Through the back door.
What's that supposed to mean?
You don't need to do it that way. I'll make a motion to allow withdrawal of EverSource applications.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any votes?
I just want to point out that the planning board through this vote has preserved the Vista on South Maple Street, looking at Montoya Range for a bus area.
I beg to differ.
No?
No. We have dodged this bullet.
Yes.
Can't we just get along?
There's drawings, and, and just take them, just file it with that front form with this town board, and then in nine, in the next few days, we give that private.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine Pratt.
Hi. I am here because I would like to propose a change in use to 231 Russell Street in Hadley, which used... Sure. Um, I'd like to propose a change in use to 231 Russell Street that used to be the Kung-Fu Studio and the Dance Studio, and I would like to open a dog daycare.
Okay, what will you do with the waste? A, a dog daycare was proposed once there before, and it, and it was met with a lot of opposition from abutters and the Board of Health.
Okay, um, so I have done quite a bit of research, and the solid waste obviously will be picked up immediately. Um, we have a couple of options for, um... I did research on dog urine, its effects in, on brown water with water aquifers and wetlands, and this I printed in its entirety. It is the only thing I could find on that issue, and it shows that it does not cause any more harm than fertilizing your lawn. However, we are willing to make other arrangements if necessary.
Well, first of all, the other dog daycare right up the road is indoor home. Are you going to be indoor only?
I would like to not be indoor only. I would, I believe for the well-being of the dogs, I would like to also have a fenced-in area in the back.
Okay, so we have to stand your public hearing on this.
Okay.
Because obviously, there, there could be some concern, but it's a residential area. We're going to, a lot of residences.
Okay.
This is actually local? This is right next to the, right, right next to Randy's building on, on.
There is a.
Project Harold Eaton Associates, right next to the, uh...
There is a picture of the actual lot. It's across from the Hadley Health Center.
Right.
Oh, that little house?
Yeah. Well, not, not the little house, the one, where it used to be the bar.
Yes.
Where the karate was, right.
Should we ask her to check with the Board of Health first, or before you? Or it's not going to be part of?
That, that, that will be part of the process.
Yeah, you should actually go to your doctor.
It's not.
Okay.
She doesn't have enough copies now to file anyway.
How many copies would I need?
We need seven copies, and then we need two copies of the butters on mailing labels.
Okay, I have more copies with me.
Okay, you have your butters on mailing labels?
That I do not have.
Okay.
No, how many dogs?
Excuse me, sir?
How many dogs are you talking about?
Um, I would board a maximum of 10, and daycare probably a maximum of 30. And we would also do grooming and training.
Okay, so our next meeting is August 1.
Okay.
And you can come back with the seven copies. I think this is adequately detailed.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is.
I can leave the other copies here if you'd like them now.
Uh, it wouldn't make any difference.
Wouldn't matter, okay.
No, it wouldn't make a difference. Really, bring it up. So, bring two copies, two copies of this, yeah, seven copies of this, and then two copies of the butters on mailing labels, and we'll give you a, a form to fill out, which is basically name, address, and phone number and stuff.
Thank you.
An application form, that's very, very basic.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
One, second, please, Mr. Appleby, please.
Correct. Nicole Burquem.
I'm here on behalf of Burquem Construction to obtain release of four lots in New York City. Um, one of them is Lot 1 Indian Pipe Drive and Shattuck Estates Plan, and the other three are on Mickey's Way, on the Sapphire Estates Plan. On the Shattuck Estates Plan, all the homes have been sold except for Lot 4. And only one lot has been sold on the Sapphire Estates Plan.
So you're requesting the release of?
Lot 1 Indian Pipe Drive and lots 10, 12, and 13, Mickey's Way.
How many will be, it's still held?
About 20.
How many lots left on that particular subdivision?
On...
Not on, on all your projects, just on that particular?
On Shattuck Estates, there'll be one lot left, but then on the Sapphire Estates, um, Lots 7, 9, and 14 have already been released, and there's a total of 16 lots, and we would, so there'd be a total of, if you release these three lots, I'm seeking release a lot, there'd be six lots total released. So there'd be 10 lots remaining.
Are these streets accepted right town yet?
They're not.
No, they're not. Are they going to be?
Yes, once all the homes are built, he paves the road again so that it's fresh, after all the construction trucks have been on it, and then he tries to have the town accept it.
When do you wait till all the houses are built on it?
So that the road's clean and not damaged or anything.
We'll get, yeah, we'll get the equipment in there to build houses sometime, unload them on a road, and the, the bulldozers, they're a little damaged, they put out grooves in the street, so we request that they not put a finished coat until...
It's all done.
Most, if not all, of the houses are built, if they don't start back marking up the road.
This is also a slightly different situation, because Burquem Construction is not a developer that sells lots. They sell completed structures, or completed houses. So they're, they're controlling all aspects of the work up to the end, and we have with the, uh, we haven't had, the one hiccup on, uh...
Gooseberry.
Gooseberry Lane, we have not had any difficulty. Mr. Burquem does not want to hold these, to be responsible for plowing this any longer than he has to be.
The town already plows it too.
That's, but he has to maintain it.
Yeah.
Who's plowing the road down?
The town.
The town plowing the road, sure. It's still a private way, and they still plow it? That's unusual.
That's standard. It is, that's what, that's what, that's what they've been doing for most, for most of.
They don't, they don't do any repairs on it.
Yeah, they do repairs, but they want to keep it open for emergency access.
I would make an motion to re, re, uh, to release Lot 1 on Indian Pike and 10, 11, of course, I'm, 10, 12, and 13 on Mickey's Way.
Second.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll formally make the motion, so the chair doesn't have to. Yeah, I'll formally make the motion so the chair doesn't have to
Well, you don't like to make a motion, so
Just a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes.
Thank you. Do you need an notary? Okay.
Probably you should.
Yeah, I brought my husband. I just have to go ahead and record this now, right? Or do I bring it to the clerk?
Uh, no, you just record, take it to the right of the street.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm assuming no people are here for Zatirica Park? The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July 18, 2017, beginning at 7:15 PM at the Hadley Senior Center Meeting Room. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Friends of Zatirica Park for special permits, site plan approval, business use, and aquifer. Erosion and erosion control to construct the park was up to 1,200 square feet upon pavilions. At the current Zatirica Field, at the corner of Huntington and Breckenridge Roads. The application and plan may be viewed in the Town Clerk's Office during the 5th hour of Public Place and Gazette, July 4 and 11.
Can I open with a comment? The Town Clerk sent us an email that said that you had not delivered plans to the Town Clerk.
We dropped off plans on the 16th.
With the clerk?
I think Mark Donald dropped them off here at one of the planning boards.
No, no, at the Town Office. So, you were supposed to file a plan to the Town Clerk.
Okay. I don't know if you do or not.
She says you didn't. So, we will see if anybody raises it as an issue.
Okay. I appreciate that. My name is Peter Wells. I'm with the Berkshire Design Group. We've been involved with this project for over a year now. We've been for you previously with various designs and we've submitted a modification after many different modifications. And I'd like to present that and then go over some of the details and talk a little bit about stormwater management. With me tonight is Mark Donald from my office who's involved in the stormwater management aspect of the project and a number of the committee members for Zatirica Park. And we're calling them Zatiricaites. So, it's a nickname. To walk you through the proposed design, it's been scaled down quite a bit from the original design. We have a much smaller parking area off of Huntington, safe access and site distance. Right now, you enter at the corner of Huntington and Breckenridge, somewhat unsafe in terms of site distance. We have a smaller parking area, a rough of sixteen cars, two for people with disabilities. And the overflow parking, which is half of that, we, we're going to use for a half-court basketball court. It will be striped for half-court basketball, but also will be striped for cars in case there is a larger picnic event or some activity there. Our pathway system begins at the parking area. This is an existing path that meanders through the pine grove that comes up through Breckenridge. This walkway, pathway system continues through, throughout the Six Acre Park. It's been flagged with tape. We met out there, some of the committee members have met out there with me to walk it. The Boy Scouts have also walked it and they're going to help out in terms of doing some of the clearing for that pathway system to occur. But it basically meanders through and then comes out over in this area. As you enter here, we've sprinkled this area with numerous shade trees throughout to provide shade for picnickers and also people exploring the proposed new playground. So, a walkway system would meander in and it's basically a loop system that people can use for exercise. As you enter, we have proposed a concrete pad for a future picnic slash shade structure. Something similar to possibly that. We haven't specked it out yet, but we are hoping to at least create the pad for that to occur. Picnic tables will be put underneath it, benches, et cetera. To the right of you, a small storage area that is also a future phase and proposed to fit into the hillside and Look, like the dust fit into the hillside, no sort. As you meander around, there are benches located throughout, picnic tables beneath the proposed shade trees. A playground area which we hope to design with using natural elements, logs, boulders, rope, et cetera. Not that large in size, benches located around it. It will be fully accessible for people with disabilities. And it's basically the focal point of the new master plan concept. The area that used to have an amphitheater is, is, this lawn area is still there. The slope itself, as you know, last year we did some clearing and we did remove the tennis courts, we removed the fencing. That was Phase 1, early action. Phase 2 is, has been out to bid and accepted. And that's to provide stability to the soils out there that are exposed as far as bringing in some topsoil for the tennis courts, rubbing some of the stumps, putting in filter fabric for the hillside and planting it with meadow and wildflower mix. So, it will not be used as an amphitheater, but just planted so that the slope will be stabilized and can be used for other activities during winter time. We have shade trees located out front. We've retained the two large maples that are on Huntington. We've also been working with our abutting neighbor, Mr. Dickinson, with regard to adding screening that will be located between his driveway and the playground area. We have fourteen evergreen trees that are sizes from six to seven feet in height. That will be hand-located with the committee and with Mr. Dickinson once the contractor is signed up. And we'll go out there and actually just state where they're going to go between some of the existing plant materials out there. That will provide not an immediate screen, but a fairly nice one. This slopes down quite a bit, so those trees are going to go in at seven-foot height and will provide We have a guard rail that will keep cars, aggressive cars, from entering the site itself. We have a gate that will be located for service vehicles and emergency vehicles. Our stormwater management, I'm going to run through it quickly. Mark is here to answer any detailed questions. But basically, we tried to mimic what is existing there now. And what happens there now is water comes down Breckenridge Road. A lot of it enters the site and basically meanders through and ends up in this low, I'll call it a detention basin, but it's not really because there never, there really never is standing water there. We've been there after some major events. It's wet, but the soils here are very conducive for infiltration. Basically, the water comes in here and then during the larger events, the 100-year, 500, water does meander on overflow, providing more infiltration, but exiting the site over here. So, that's our existing condition. Water is not treated whatsoever. We're on an aquifer zone here. So, our approach to stormwater management was to mimic this, but also to go two steps further and treat the water in two areas for any total suspended solids or oils that may drain off of both Breckenridge and the parking area. So, the way we've done that basically is we have a low area here that we're going to carve out that will have a catch basin structure that will be possibly nine inches in height above the ground that's there. Water will come in from Breckenridge. Silt will have a chance to meander down to the base and then water will rise slightly during larger events. Water will flow into the catch basin and on out into an outlet structure here and into the field area. That's one method of treatment. The other for the parking area, the parking area drains down in this direction. We have a small section of curbing and a stormwater treatment chamber there that will remove total suspended solids and oils over eighty percent as required. So, those two elements are additional costs, but needed since we are in a overlay aquifer district. We have a grading plan that we have submitted as part of the packet. And it shows how the area slopes down into the field area that's located here. We have piping coming into it. Fairly simple. It's going to look a little bit different than what's out there now because that, that whole area here is going to be lowered slightly. We have a contingency for stump removal. We know that's going to be a possible issue because this is an old stump dump for the DPW. So, we are planning on hitting some stumps once this is lowered and we are planning for that.
How much lower will it be?
Treat me?
How much lower will it be than the existing field?
In some areas, eighteen inches. So, it's modified quite a bit. We feel comfortable with it. As I mentioned, we have been out to bid for what we're calling Phase 2, stabilizing the site. And we hope that that will occur shortly and seeding can occur when the weather gets a little bit more cooler. Mark, I'm not sure if you want to add anything or any of the committee members? We are here for site plan review and stormwater.
Where's all the water going through that parking lot?
It's going into a catch basin, a stormwater treatment chamber here, and then from there it is piped out into the field area.
Is absolutely no spill over into the street?
No. There's none.
So, none of that water is going to go out on the street?
No.
I thought you had some arrows going to show the overflow headed out towards the street. The wind down below.
Sure.
In an extremely large storm, higher storm, this will function better than existing. But in extremely large storms, there will be some overflow from that depressed area going into stuffy road as it does now, but less than what was covered earlier.
But how much runoff, you've got a sheer runoff, you've got to
You can only add Only as you approach a higher storm, not even normal everyday stuff.
From a historical standpoint in terms of stormwater, we haven't looked back that far, but my guess is that early on, at some point, water basically meandered down Breckenridge and Huntington early, early on and probably did not come into the park itself. But since this area has been gravel and things have moved around, it's doing it now.
Well, I think that was the case. They did that because of ice, the water running to ice the road. I mean, a real hazard over there.
Sure. So, we've responded to it with this system.
So, you're not going to create no hazard to the ice during winter?
No.
The, so the, right now, where your parking lot is is basically where the baseball diamond is in the mud shell.
Baseball diamond used to be there, yeah.
Right in there. And the outfield is basically where you're going to be putting in the depressed area.
Yes.
Okay.
Where's the toe of the, of the hill from the back?
The toe of the hill runs along the walkway system here.
Way in the back then. It's all flat. It was at the hill.
Way in the back. The toe, toe is right here. And that runs up to an area where we're going to create an overlook since it's been cleared. And the views from up there, if you haven't been on the park, are quite nice now. You can really see the Summit House and the whole range.
So, that basically from the toe to the road, it's all flat land there?
From the pathway to here, this is, this is where the old tennis court used to be. That's going to remain flat. Then from here back, it's going to be similar to what's out there now. A slope. We're going to level it, not level, we're going to create a gentle, more of a average slope from here down by just doing a minor changes of grades within that central section. But it's going to basically look the same as it does now with the exception of adding wildflower mix and erosion control matting. Curlex blanket, it's a very nice material that is laid over and you hydroseed over it and it holds the soils in.
Where's the waterfall go from that toe? What direction is that?
Right now, it goes from this toe and just sheet flows over. There are some exist, there's two existing catch basins that will remain on site. Those are infiltration basins. They're not tied to anything. We're not depending on those for our stormwater management. We're picking up water and letting it enter the field area.
What's the timeframe for the project?
Phase 2, the stabilization is going to occur within the next two, three months. We are going to be going before CPA shortly and depending on how that goes, we're not sure. Is that a correct answer?
Yes.
We're hopeful that
Oh, yeah, we're hopeful.
That the CPA will see this in mid-August and then hopefully it'll be on the fall town meeting. So, it could be on this work next spring.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, are we going to get any problems with this if, say, a neighbor files an injunction or something on it because they didn't file with the town clerk?
Did the Town Clerk make it him aware of it or was it
He made me aware of it.
Well, you guys, they were told to do it.
So
We have, that's a question we have no idea on.
I'm just curious if it was through the department. I don't work there anymore, so I'm curious if it was through the department, maybe they did file it?
We expect the, basically the applicant or the applicant's engineer to file. Usually, you're also, they're also filing a check. And so, it's one-stop shopping. I just don't recall, and our, we don't keep minutes in that level of detail as to whether we specifically reminded them to do it this time. Can't say whether we did or not, but these are frequent flyers, so I'm sure that they
The application fee was waived, you know, we don't know. Anyways.
My question is still, I don't have an answer.
Nobody has an answer. We'll have to wait and see.
Nobody, nobody has come to this public hearing to raise it as an issue.
Aren't we?
Well, but we're not a agreed party.
We'll be filing tomorrow.
Okay.
Not that that Not that that...
Any questions? Tell us from anybody in the audience on this. Yes, sir?
Jim DePisan, I guess my only concern is on the water, the water for the property and they're, the punny, I'm putting trees and stuff along the bank which eventually I think will help, but at this point it will be a, it's a pretty steep banking and I'm not going to get much protection. As it was before, I had like thirty feet of trees and brush and kind of pretty much garbage stuff in there, but at least it was a barrier, you know, like I wasn't sitting out there like that.
Has this been cleared out?
It's been halfway cleared out, three quarters of the way.
Some of the junk trees were cleared out, some of the lower brush was cleared out in order to make room for the screening. And yes, it's different looking than it was earlier and that's why we had proposed...
You're talking, you've got the old Logan house, you used to call that...
No, I built the new house.
The new house.
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
I'm right up against it, I look right down onto the...
Maybe you're quite a bit higher, right?
Yeah, I'm quite a bit higher, which means if they put something like maybe four or five foot shrubs on there, that would even block the view. Trees down on the slope aren't going to do much of anything at this point.
That's why I mean...
Down the road it would, you know, I mean, five, ten years down the road.
Where's your boundary line, right down?
My boundary line is just off my driveway, right at the top of the building.
So if they put a screen in on the side of your driveway, would that block it?
Yeah, that would help a lot. I don't know exactly what they could use there.
So let them do that.
I'm not sure.
That's why we offered to meet with Mr. Dickens, out there and we'll walk in where he wants it.
Would that satisfy you?
Yeah, that's the only thing I'm concerned about.
An arbor whitey type shrub?
What's that?
An arbor whitey type shrub, some kind of an evergreen.
Yeah, I would think it, there was some kind of an evergreen in there that was going around because they're sliding and stuff down there like they always do.
Yeah, if they, what they talked about, putting those, under those other trees, they won't survive underneath those other trees. Is there any...
This is up on the hill.
I know, but is there any other trees up on the hill on that?
At this point, there's still some stuff they left behind that hasn't been taken down there, but it's not, you know, there's a couple of maples there that are pretty decent, but most of it's junk.
So if they put something like a six foot, that providing shield there, that would satisfy?
And so will you?
I'm not sure if that's necessarily be that, but something up there.
Well, I think you need screening there.
Yeah, of some sort, yeah. I don't want something that goes gigantic to the wall either.
Always cut it down.
So are we talking about planting something on your land?
No, I still think it'll be on their land.
Okay.
No, it'll be on the parkland.
Okay.
And his property line is right on the parkland.
The driveway is right on the park line?
Just about, it's close.
So that's perfect for shopping.
So we'll work with him now.
Any other concerns yet?
No, everything looks good at this point.
That would be a condition of approval.
Yep.
Which will it be?
Condition of approval. By the way, we will, we will not withhold approval. We will approve and you and this gentleman, this committee and this gentleman must come to, must come to an agreement on basically type and size and if you don't, come back to us and then we'll try to compromise. But most of the time, it sounds like you're going to have, you know, you're willing, he's willing, it shouldn't be a big deal. Anything else, anybody?
Okay, I'll tweak this a little bit, so we'll lose the second business...
Site plan, business use in aquifer and erosion control.
I mean, you have business uses.
Well, I wasn't sure, that's why I put in there that way if we decided that, we don't have to do anything about it, but I didn't put it in here and planned out of this. Is there any set hours?
It's not a sale price, it's either.
Yeah.
It's determined by the commission.
What is it?
It hasn't, there hasn't been a determined time for the park up to now, but that is...
Well, I hope it's not around the clock.
No, no. I would, I would say that it would follow every other one. When I was working for Park and Rec, I had already decided that there would be a sign that said dusk.
Do any lights on involved in this?
No.
No outside lighting?
No.
I certainly would like to see what the hours are going to be called to go.
A lot of parks do do that till dusk?
She says it's dusk.
A lot of parks have the sign, I did some research while I was working at Park and Rec and a lot of the signs say until dusk, you know, and we have cooperation from our fire and case department to help us with that as well, but if we, I'm sure that the commission will continue thinking that until dusk would be the appropriate time.
Should we put that in?
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
So I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that the business use in the aquifer doesn't apply because this is not a business, it's a town.
It's a municipal.
Municipal use. Okay, so...
It's actually in the use code, it is a municipal use and it does, that's why it requires a special permit.
But it doesn't require the business use in the...
No, no, it was, we're talking what permits are advertised versus what permits are asked to be needed for us to go on. I put business use in aquifer only because I wasn't sure and if we decided it was, they didn't post it, we're going to repost a whole hearing again. If we don't need it, it's gone, we don't need it.
Okay.
That's all.
So since we're determining it is municipal use, then it's not a business use. So satisfies general purposes, not detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood, not prohibited by the bylaw. So are those the revised plans? Do we have those or is that more recently? Okay, what's the revision date?
June sixteen.
June sixth. June sixth, I'm looking.
June sixth, excuse me.
June sixth.
Yep.
Okay. So special conditions, screening plantings along Butters driveway and hours open till dusk. Obviously the plan has been distributed.
Under hours, daylight hours as opposed to open, can we, that way can just be planned from a...
Also on that screening, that would be acceptable to the... Not they just throw up to the guy and this is what you get, it's going to be acceptable.
Okay, it's in. Design features or integral part, I'm going to edit some of this down because there are no roof lines, doors.
Will the pavilion be a year-round pavilion or just in the summer?
Probably just summer. We're not sure if we can afford a structure that has a shingle roof. It might just be a canvas structure, but we're not sure yet. I don't see using it in the winter.
I can't imagine we're going to put a structure on either, you know, using it anyways, yeah.
We're not going to plow the park.
Put no teepees up there because the Indians have called for burial well or something and we won't do that.
So the no signage, other, will Libby can assign it?
It'll be assigned at entry bay.
Identification zone down.
Okay. Just put to return with sign detail. Landscaping is all shown, no outdoor lighting fixtures. Performance security. Approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required. And we just ask, well, this gets into the same issue we voted on for the senior center at the North Haven Fire Substation. Do we want to have independent consultant review it or will we accept their certification?
I think we'll accept it.
So certify compliance.
Are you acceptable?
Yeah.
If you can't file it, no.
Okay, so we'll disjoint it, but basically the motion is to approve it with the two conditions and subject to approval of other boards if and as required.
But who's going to check? He's going to check his own, right?
Yes, we're going to agree that they will certify compliance, just like we did with the other four factors.
The fire station and the senior center, do we agree they were approved?
Well, that was because I thought that the town DPW director was a civil engineer and that, but he isn't. He had no engineering background, so...
I'll second the motion.
Is any in conflict checking as well?
No.
No, no, it's...
Of course not.
In this case, you're basically, he's, they're licensed engineers in Massachusetts and they're in a sign off that they did something that they didn't do, you know, there's no percentage.
Well, nobody's voting control.
I will get to that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the site plan approval. Any other discussion? If not, all the payers say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion passes unanimously and site plan approved.
And then the motion for erosion and settlement control, provisions are applicable, project is not exempt, site work is consistent with the bylaw, most site work satisfies the performance standards, so that's my motion.
Second, any erosion control? Any discussion? All the payers say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion passes unanimously. Okay?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
You guys are going to file tomorrow with the town clerk?
Yes, we are.
Okay, then we also have Hally Village Barn, what most everybody else is here for. Hally Village Barn.
Oh.
Yes, that's me, I'm sorry.
But we also have...
All the names, thanks.
And the...
Amherst Department.
Amherst Departments.
We'll do the Amherst Departments first, it's easy.
It's as easy as I've been told it is. The Amherst Departments.
So we, this is Mark Ronald, we're trying to design, we filed the application with the planning board for site plan approval for the parking lot associated with the Amherst Hotel. During the process, we have also filed with the Amherst and have the conservation commission. As part of the review, they want to review the wetland delineation and that's undergoing and if they modify that line, we're going to have to modify the parking lot slightly. Rather than have you approve the plan as we have it, which we're comfortable with, and then they modify it, we have to modify the parking lot. We'd prefer not to come back to you for that. We'd prefer to come to you with a clean final plan and as such, we're going to request the extension, continuation, I should say.
Hotel when?
I'm hoping two weeks, but we still haven't got the review back regarding delineation.
We'll put you on for, we'll put you on for the third Tuesday of October, which would be August, which would be the fifteenth.
August, not October.
Oh, yeah, August fifteenth, yes.
Okay.
So give us, or email us or give us a call if you want to be on there.
All right.
Okay?
Very good.
Simple?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we have the Hally Village Building continuation and a big comment there was the cupola.
Cupola, yeah, just real quickly on our project, refresh memory. Existing site, we're proposing to the Bay Road Route Nine. This is where the new conference center is. The buildings we're here are going down right at this corner, proposing to put in a retail store. Very quickly, some of the aspects of that, the building's going in, revising the parking slot ever so slightly. We made all the setback requirements, we made all the open space requirements, we made all the parking regulation requirements. As far as drainage, we are slightly decreasing the amount of impervious area, so therefore we're slightly improving the runoff characteristics of the site. As far as the impervious area, even though we're decreasing the overall impervious area, part of the parking is being replaced with roof. The roof is cleaner than pavement, so we're improving the water quality as well. We did, last time we spoke, you said you did want a peer review regarding the drainage for, just the drainage aspect of it. We did get a peer review letter from Dussette and Associates and basically they said everything was all right. There were a couple of minor comments. One of their comments was they requested some additional spot grades primarily around these islands. The design was fine, they just asked for a few more spot grades to ensure there was no ponding occurring. Revised plans we have here essentially have five or six more spot grades on them. They also had a question regarding the green space behind the building as it affects the neighbors. We're essentially decreasing the amount of green space behind the building and replacing it with roof, which is drained towards this way, so we are actually decreasing the amount of water that is going to the neighbors to the west. Those are essentially the two basic comments that we had. Last time we were here also, we had not been before the historical commission and since that time we have been through the historical commission and they have provided a letter to the planning board which said their, the project is acceptable. And at that point, I know the planning board had some questions regarding the architecture of the building. This is a new architecture of the building and I'm going to turn that aspect of the presentation over to the architect unless you have some more questions of me.
The only thing I've got is the drainage off the roof is that it's not going to go more, the roof is pitched towards the property line, ain't it?
No, there, we have gutters on the entire roof, so the water will not drip off and be collected in downspouts and piped to the closed drainage system. So per our previous visit before you, thank you for seeing us again. We went to the historical commission and presented them with the same design that we showed you with the modification of the cupola instead of the long skinny cupola we had previously. We now have three smaller cupolas that we think are a bit more fitting for the overall structure. Other than that, nothing has changed. We have siding color, base color, main trim color, sorry, trim color, base color, siding color and window color are here. And this is the material, it's a hardy panel, shiplau.
Could you bring that build, that joint closer to us already?
Sure.
What size is that cupola?
They're roughly tall, they're about six, about three meters actually from the ridge to the peak.
And square?
Yeah.
Wide?
Twenty-eight inches.
Twenty-eight inches?
Decided you asked me why so small, why too?
Well, there's a number of different options. You can go obviously for a large one, you can go for some smaller ones. We felt since this building wasn't necessarily a formal building technology like a mini house or a church or something like that, we were more familiar with series of small vehicles.
I would have C2 or double action.
It kind of looks like three chimneys.
Not the touch sheet in the...
It kind of looks like three chimneys as opposed to a cupola, to be honest with you. But that, if you want, that image you tried to project?
No, I think it's interesting that you would see that.
Chimneys don't look bigger than twenty-eight inches. That's twenty-eight inches square, right?
Yeah.
It's about like the... Like the cardboard.
Twenty-four inches.
Three feet high? Twenty-four inches square.
Twenty-four inches. Twenty-four inches, so.
That's tiny.
So it'd be pretty much like that, three feet high, and that's. They're too small.
They look like bins out of tobacco bars.
Exactly what I was thinking, Jim.
I don't like them. I'll be honest with you, I'd rather see two larger cupolas that look like a cupola as opposed to something that looks like a tobacco bin, tobacco bin done apart. That's my, that's my opinion, I know the Historical Commission approved it, but we can certainly do better.
Are there any standard architectural measurements proportionally where cupola height should be for the building height?
A single cupola would be.
I agree, but I'm just asking the question, probably not, huh? As far as I know, there are none, there also are no guidelines, which we would have been happy to follow.
I would think something, I'm looking like maybe, I mean, if you have, well, I don't wanna design a point, but something like two large cupolas that would look like a cupola.
Yeah, let's see, something like at least four feet high, maybe three foot square.
Something more, you know, not massive, but something that's, something that stands out more as a cupola. I mean, I'm not talking cupola, it's like someone building that don't have, you know, eight to ten foot wide, that's a little ridiculous.
For a building of this scale.
A building of this scale, or something like two that are maybe John's John's, you know, something maybe twice, two, two cupolas are about twice as big as those. So that, that's six foot, that's six foot.
See, if you want three foot square, four, four nine.
So do we wanna give provision approval, Jim, and have them come back with a couple of designs, just sketched out?
How hard are they giving you the numbers?
They wanna pull a ruling as soon as they are approved, so.
We can give conditional approval except for the cupolas, I would think, because everything else we've approved, right?
Yes.
So rather than fight over the cupola and hold up the whole approval process, we will hold up the approval process of the roof pending the cupola, so it's just awkward.
I would, well, first of all, I'm behind all my, all my filings anyway, so if this got delayed two weeks, it really wouldn't delay you any, because I'm probably a month to six weeks out on final decisions at this point. So, I would rather just have, you know, you've thrown out some numbers, sort of one of those, be careful what you wish for, because we don't know what it would look scaled on this.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I have a little bit of a concern here, because we were, we came with a, there aren't official guidelines per se, we came here a month ago and, and we had some concerns and, you know.
Well, there aren't design guidelines for the Village Center overlay district, although I don't know if they go into that.
Well, not for a cupola. And I actually spoke with the Historic Commission specifically about design guidelines for the buildings, and they said it's up to the architect. So, I'm just surprised now that here we are having this talk about cupolas again.
No, don't be surprised, we talked about it last time, it's not off the table.
You said you want a cupola, not sound like.
Yeah, but if you put one, you make a new, or you put two, you make a sound like.
One would be on, one cupola, we talked about a cupola, and one, or whatever would be something, we've left it very wide open, and one cupola on a building of that would be, to make it, to make it look scaled, would be ugly, to be honest with you. And, I mean, if those cupolas there, with three, the three of them, they just look so small, that's my impression, you know, twenty-eight inch cupola on a building.
Twenty-four inch.
Twenty, twenty, okay, two foot cupola, that's, that's on a building a hundred feet long.
Seventy, what?
Hundred and four feet.
Oh, right, seventy. But, you know, remind you, the vents on tomato shed, it's not necessarily a bad thing.
Well.
That's what they were for, right, to vent the roof, so, to have a length that we want.
What does the other board member feel?
I guess the concern is, it is one of the approaches to town, so we do like to give it a little more thought, and, you know, I don't wanna just send you off and say, come back with a three foot square. I think it might be helpful, and I don't want to spend the client's money wildly, but it might be helpful to try a couple of different.
You could put some stick on it.
Come, come in with a few variations, so we don't get into a volleying this back and forth.
Yeah, never to happen, town is the old daddy station, see if you guys are coming to send it to that.
Only they owned it, they could, but I don't think you need to go into the same level of detail with every variant, but if you could just project on, print on, whatever, I assume this is all computerized.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we could do a hundred options, really, but I'm sorry.
We don't get a hundred, but I think it might be very helpful and more likely to get this resolved at one, one last gasp, if you, and I think we can fit them in in two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
If you come back with a couple of variations that work for the, for the owner and for the tenant, and are proportionate, I think we can probably resolve it on the spot definitely.
Is the main issue just the size, or is it in the design you don't like?
Well, the design is fine.
Okay.
It's just the size.
Well, except to the extent that the size is part of the design, it's a, you know, chicken and egg problem.
The picture you show here, that seems like some kind of a stand you can buy out of some catalog, looks fine, okay, so the appearance of the cupola is fine, we're not designing the, just the dimensions are, are looking at.
What's the picture of the roof?
Six foot.
This is, so in order to see you in two weeks?
Yes.
What are we doing on the schedule?
You're on, you're on.
Already on.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
So that's the fifteenth, is that right?
No, that's the first.
We have, oh, department, Hattley Village Barn, oh, Colony Estates, preliminary subdivision. Thank you very much. For the record, John Goddard, from Arlo Beck Associates, here tonight, on behalf of Mr. Peter Delinas for a proposed eight lot subdivision off of Shattuck Road. This is on the west side of Shattuck Road, just north of Bayberry Lane, and before I get into too much detail, I do have some plans reflecting some modest text revisions, happy to lay them out if anybody wants a larger copy in front of them.
Any idea how many people will live in off of Shattuck Road right now? Is it, is it five hundred? Thousand?
What?
How many people, how many houses were built in there, how many, how many people can live off of Shattuck Road with all the developments and, and, and holding them up? Yeah, well, including this.
There are still a fair amount of undeveloped.
How many houses?
There's a lot of undeveloped, a huge row. I doubt it's a thirty percent of the road.
The showers, is that in the area?
No, not yet. Just a few brief facts about the site. The proposed street length is about eight hundred and forty feet, looking serviced by public water and private septic systems. We did get the opportunity to get some peer review, Thomas Hogan over at Dusset Associates. In the interest of brevity and expediency, I'm happy to paraphrase and go through each comment as it relates to the proposed plan. First comment was, we're gonna go to the procedural aspects, there was a note about the scale of the plan, I mean, this is a fifty scale plan, and as submitted originally with the application, there was a waiver request from that, of course, at the discretion of the board. Next two comments had to do with legend and plan content, I think we all, you can appreciate that this is, we'll call it essentially an excerpt, an overall, a picture of what's going to be a complete plan set, which includes all of those details, as would be appropriate for definitive subdivision application. The amended plan before you this evening does have the address and the owner, or the owner record on there, as well as, under design standards, we had requested a waiver with regard to the minimum distance, to a horizontal curve under section five point one point one point seven, it's related to, if you will, the design standard tables that Mr. Hogan picked up on under item five point one point two, so the correspondence that's distributed for this evening does include both of those sections to be requested as waivers. His last note under design standard has to do with tree lines, this site was recently logged, we're thinking it's been maybe three or four years back, and the aerial plan that Mr. Hogan was looking at is likely been super, well, it's out of date. So nonetheless, we are happy to show a schematic tree line as would be appropriate, having said that much, beyond, you know, what remains of the open space and the individual lots, of course, as subject to development considerations of each individual landowner. I'm gonna flip back for just a moment to, he had a comment about the horizontal curve and the site distances associated with it, Mr. Hogan was concerned that that waiver we asked for essentially was to allow this little bend to come into the subdivision and allow for a ninety degree angle to Shattuck Road. I think what we're looking at is two modestly different schools of thought, one would be to come in at an oblique angle and make sure you maintain that straight approach, Mr. Hogan's comment was that it would be appropriate to look at site distances both horizontally and vertically for the approach, to make sure that there wasn't any obstruction to, if you will, a stop vehicle and anybody approaching exiting the subdivision. The way we show it would be the preferred manner, having said that much, at the definitive level, we can always adjust, similar to Bayberry Lane, to an oblique intersection to maintain, if you will, that site distance to the end, and still have our required radii for the proposed right of way. So, having said that much, I think it's an either or for the preliminary subdivision. Mr. Hogan's comment regards to stormwater management reflects the diagrammatic nature of this preliminary plan, his mention had to do with stormwater test pits and outfalls from the two proposed locations that we're showing here, we do show a detention basin or subsurface and/or subsurface basin upwards of the frontage on Shattuck, Shattuck Road, and a subsurface basin further in the site, obviously this is schematic, we have not performed those test pits at this time, but certainly we'd be doing so as part of the definitive design process. And outfalls, of course, will be designed at that time. Last two comments are just making sure that there's, I shouldn't say adequate, I should say the necessary coordination with the fire department, so that they have the opportunity to comment on their proposed design, we would expect that hydrants would be located at the standard three to five hundred foot range, as would be appropriate, and as is under their review for the subdivision regulations, and the last one had to do with just clarifying that it's municipal water and private septic systems, so there's a subsequent permitting activity for, of course, each lot that would be appropriate.
So all the perks, perks have been done, perk test?
To be honest, I, I'm not entirely sure if it has been, at this preliminary level. Thank you, appreciate that.
So all lots passed? What's, what's for the property beyond the law, that's just gonna remain as?
That would be open space, this was reviewed by the nature species program, so.
That's my next question.
Okay, great, so.
Because in that area, the spito frog has been.
Rumored.
It's a rumored.
The turtle.
Is now it's the spotted turtle?
Having said that much, the layout you see here is based almost entirely upon the outcome of their review process, so that does end up being protected open space. Does the Mill River flow back there, at all?
Russell Brook.
There is Russell Brook there?
Yes, Russell Brook.
And the topography from the, the end of the cul-de-sac down to Russell Brook, what's the drop?
There's a little bit of a rise within this area, as you can see by those two peaks right there, but we're dropping from roughly a hundred, if you will, assumed range, down to, at the, we're in the low eighties, so about twenty feet or so.
Yeah, because that was the concern, some of the drainage is gonna go west, and obviously you're gonna design it so.
Thank you.
That comes in the definitive plan.
Yes, sir.
So generally, are we looking for a perk test indicator on the lots as we, it's been a long time since we.
For the definitive, we will, yes, yes.
So, they'll be so located.
They'll, they'll show the location when they were done.
So the only waiver of any critical importance is the entrance to Shattuck Road, and this looks fine, it seems like a ninety degree, and it's not getting heartburn over that.
It's not like a two forty-seven.
True. Well, strategy, this is a fair amount of crap, and that was someone and have the boat developing off of the one wall, ladies, and still, it had been, is it finally paved all the way through?
Yes. The town was very magnanimous in paying, paving, it could have required, it's the Jalinas to pave it.
They used chapter ninety money to pave it after Mr. Precum laid water mains in.
That's right.
I'm not participating in this one.
Okay. So anything that we should question regarding the preliminary plan? No reason to reject it, because the lots are the required size, the layout is, is directed.
When would you anticipate coming back with the definitive, Peter? As soon as we can lay ink to paper. I imagine it's gonna be at least a number of weeks. Some kind of, probably. I would expect that would be the best opportunity for us. Now, you realize with eight lots, two of those, one of those is gonna have to be affordable. Or put in a housing stock. Yes, yeah, okay, which I think.
No.
We need clarity.
Not necessarily.
Not the housing stock, the lot.
No, the lot.
Well, that's what we were just talking about, in the inclusionary zoning.
This is, this is directly under the inclusionary zoning by, section of the bylaw.
But as with the problem Barry Roberts faced, we may need to, we're gonna face the same problem.
Under both of those.
Under both of them, but this project, how is the affordability component gonna be monitored? So it may make sense to.
The original inclusionary fund was put in under the inclusionary bylaw, we didn't put it under the senior for the fund, because we had already locked, taken it out with the, with the inclusionary, but now, you, you, we talked about it there, so I don't need to repeat myself, but what we don't wanna do is.
myself, but what we don't want to do is put, have some, have a developer spend that amount of money on doing this, only to have to do it, like, okay, he sells it, the new person owns it. Now, how do they put it into the fund? How do they, you know, it gets to be an absolute, could be a, could be a bit difficult, even at that.
It's complex, for sure.
So if we can put the fund in, then he puts money into the fund, he doesn't worry about it, the town has the fund to institute, or not institute, to distribute as appropriate, and we still meet our requirements.
So what got caught up, cut out of the inclusionary zoning at the time, was we set up inclusionary zoning, we set up a fund, but we did not set up a committee to distribute the fund.
No, I'm not following the fund. If all of a sudden, Mr. Gilis throws money into the fund, and Barry Roberts throws money into the fund, we have this fund of money that's going to be spent on affordable housing, who is...
Well, that's the thing, that, on town meeting, when the finance committee said, oh, the affordable housing, affordable housing committee could pledge the credit of the town without town meeting approval, I, we don't know where that came from, but we amended it on the floor to take the committee out. So we have a requirement, we have a fund, but we don't have anyone to run the fund.
But no, I'm worried about the, not worried, but I want kind of some clearance on, who is in charge of the fund, and where are they going to put these affordable units?
That's what we asked...
Whereas, in this situation, this is what we voted on, that it should go within the development.
That's right, but I'll just use Barry's numbers. He's going to put $65,000 into the fund, and he's going to, he's going to put $70,000 into the fund, just using Barry's numbers.
Yeah.
Okay? And he's going to spend roughly $65,000 to, for that one building lot, to institute and to follow up on that fund, which is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Okay? So we're trying, that's what we asked Larry to do, what are other towns doing, like, some towns, their housing, excuse me, their housing authorities have accepted that responsibility, but the vast majority of them, it sounds like, do not want, and the state has told them not to accept it. So we're trying to find out, with Larry's input, what can be done, and how do we do this? So that we get what we designed this to do, without extreme heartbreak to anybody.
So the inclusionary zoning bylaw explicitly includes fees in lieu of affordable housing provision. So it's just like transfer development rights, where we set up a, we set up two paths to transfer development rights. The mall owner could go out and find you and buy your development rights, or they could toss the money into the pot.
But that's, that's, that's not quite the same, because we have, in the APR land, that's always being put in, that's where the town share goes.
Yeah, but that's, but no developer has ever made a private contract.
So what, where, the way I would look at it, all of a sudden, if this fund builds up, then some developer is going to say, I want to flop some 40B housing.
All in one area. Apples and oranges. But it's in the bylaw right now, as an alternative to the requiring an inclusionary unit, an applicant may contribute to establish the local housing trust fund to be used for the development of affordable housing elsewhere.
That's, could be discussed later, okay.
Yeah, so that's something, that's, that's what Barry is asking for.
And that's what, we're going to, you're right, we'll have to discuss it with Larry, you're right, we're not going to reinvent the wheel.
That's the demo and the detail, that you're absolutely right, and the last thing we want to do is make up something. We want to try to find out what's being done elsewhere, be it Massachusetts or other states, and somehow model hours after that, so we're following an approval formula.
Because we could get what, we could get a, an apartment complex with the funding here, that would be 40B housing, which we're almost trying to avoid, because we have our share already.
That's right, and all we want to do is maintain the status quo.
Exactly correct.
We're not trying to, I can imagine, we have so much money in there, anybody could afford a complex, we're looking to put in a couple of, you know, I don't know exactly what it'll look like.
Well, I mean, there's certainly some noble gestures here, in that if there's a rundown house, then we could use that fund for rehabbing a house, there's a lot of options.
That's an idea, that's exactly correct, if the housing authority now owns that, or they, they extend it somehow, is there a demand for it? We don't know.
We, basically, we need a department to minister it, right?
Yes.
Well, that's what you'd have to create, a whole department.
No, it could be the board of selectmen, it could be, it could be the housing authority, we've got to find out who's appropriate, and just follow that path, without burdening them.
So, okay, so what you're looking for is preliminary approval, I mean, approval for the preliminary, correct?
Basic layout, size and stuff like that, normal. Okay, any other?
Yeah. Are you currently here real estate tax?
I believe so, I'm not certain. I'm not certain on this side, so...
Okay, so I'm not participating, but I will tell you, he does not own his property.
Who's the developer?
He is all the people that are in arrears. There's a...
Not as Peter Delinis.
Another party, I can get the name of the current owner?
Who is Valley Building?
Valley Building is one of our companies.
They are in arrears to the tune of $500, Valley Building. Own unpaid real estate battles as of 7/18/2017. They owe one, let's see, 148, 155, 145, and 55.
And that's not a problem, Peter.
I was going to say, it's not, we're not talking big bucks here. If Peter Delinis, he's not on here. You're looking for your name?
That's the best start with an ID. Don't you worry about that, mister.
The apartments, 40B apartments, we're going to do it.
Okay.
Okay, will you clean those up? What about Joe's brother?
Wow!
Look at him. No, he's getting, he's getting older, he may forget.
I painted it red.
Thanks, thanks. Anything else?
If not, okay. A motion to approve your preliminary, preliminary subdivision plan, based upon the filing findings, there are compliance with Valley subdivision regulations, and being invested of the town that provides a master new law, chapter 41, section 81m. The board specifically finds adequate access to all lots, to be safe and convenient, adequate provision for congestion, lessening congestion, provision for reducing danger to life and limb, adequate provision for safety in case of fire, flood, panic, et cetera, adequate provision for ensuring sanitary conditions, compliant with Valley zoning bylaws. The one waiver is at the intersection with Shattuck Road, which they put in a 90-degree angled versus the 90-degree, which one do we want to go with, the one that's shown?
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay. Which one are you calling that?
What's the date of that plan?
How about a perpendicular?
Perpendicular to Shattuck Road.
Is there a date on that plan?
This is revised today, July 18.
Just curious, what, what are the couple of lines here? In other words, these, the darker lines are the lot demarcations. What's, what's this name?
I believe that's the required square, so that the required zoning, frontage under zoning...
It's a 150, so that's...
Yes.
So this is...
Versus, of course, the dashed setback line.
Yeah.
Okay, perpendicular access that, you find work before is a perpendicular entrance to Shattuck Road dated 7/18/17, and that's it? Basically, that's the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any, yes, and Mr. Boyer abstaining, so... Thank you all for your time this evening. You did file the preliminary plan, preliminary forms and everything with town clerk, right? That would be my understanding, I did not personally... Because we didn't, I didn't get a, please let him find, a, she makes a photocopy, that she filed everything with her, so, can you just please check that, if you have a photocopy? Be happy to do so, I'll leave these revised drawings with you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, we have some bills to pay? Okay, third one, invoice daily hamp, Tousette for appetizing, 20972, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, a motion to pay PBPC for the last quarter of the last invoice for the fiscal year of 3549.28, so move. Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. And today, we had our scanner delivered, it is set up in the planning board office, and it works, just going to run through its unlimited, extremely large options, so they know how to use it efficiently, when it works, I scan a few drawings in, and that worked fine, so this is the motion to pay that of 7595, we were allotted 7600, so we came in five bucks on the budget, so move.
Second.
Motion approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
So it could, could do the master plan update, it doesn't have to be done, just to say, it doesn't have to be done tonight, because it was off of a article and not our budget, but...
Motion to pay $22,985.43 for the master plan update, so move.
Second.
How much? $1985.43. This is the selectmen to pay this for?
Well...
We've been signing that.
We've been signing them, in fact, the other one, it's got selectmen on it too, so...
Let's try and find out what the planning board did?
Yes. I guess technically, it is under the select board budget, but they've delegated to us.
They do this when it comes to the Warren Vayners. A motion, yeah, we motion to sec to pay the money, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes.
CPA, what we can't do anything about, and it did mention that they had a outstanding invoice from early in the fiscal year, which I haven't been able to find anything on a quick scan. So, and I forwarded the CPA bill to David Nixon. I did get an... Do you have the Ms. Patel file on?
Yes.
I did get an email, which I had sent around to you a little while ago, but she's very interested in talking with us. This is from Melissa Downs, and there is a program funded by the U.S. Department of Energy to help communities improve zoning surrounding solar generation. And she, I don't know where, she said she read an article about EverSource's plan to use farmland for solar generation, and other communities are also trying to balance solar arrays with open space wishes. So she is basically offering to hook us up with some federal funding, free consulting service to help communities improve zoning surrounding solar generations. So, does that sound something everyone's interested in?
This is to promote solar?
Not necessarily. Balanced solar arrays with open space wishes.
I learned, I learned, there were these sessions in John that I went to in West Virginia, if you accept federal largess, then you are likely subject to every federal law and books.
Well, I think it won't hurt to have the person come in and talk to us, and point out what they offer. This is a cleverly cloaked letter, you can't quite figure out what...
It, it, it's very difficult to read, I agree, because in the top paragraph, it sounds like she's, the person is talking about promoting farmland versus solar, and then further down the letter, it sounds like they're talking about promoting solar.
You'll note that the first paragraph is inserted into a form...
Oh, you're right, you're right, the way it was placed up, a good point.
I think the service is a promoter for solar.
Well, you see that she is not a government employee, she is an employee of a consulting group.
Solar Smart Group.
Solar Smart, yeah, this is like smart growth.
I want to be a solar...
Meister Consultants Group.
We should assign Mike to do some research.
So, invite her to come out, see how... Mike, if she could make it here in the same meeting that Larry's here, I think that might be a good thing.
Yeah, I think it'd be, you know, it's a good idea, I'm not, I'm not that close-minded, although I'm close. Well, no, but, but, you know...
Clearly, this program was set up under a different administration, and I wonder if Rick Perry's energy department is still responsible for this, okay?
Of course, the box was, we could find out what they're doing, and if it's promoting solar, we're not interested in promoting solar, we're interested in...
Exactly.
... preserving certain aspects of our town, because of solar, so...
Would it be okay to say we wish to mitigate the problems solar is causing in our town?
You know, on the basis of the level of detail in the letter from her, I don't, would not plan to respond with much detail... I don't, would not plan to respond with much detail either.
Just, just invite her to a meeting and see if she can make the meeting, any meeting, of course, to the month. The first meeting of the month and Larry's typically here. And that way we can...
You might mention to her, do you have any problem at all with EverSource's problems?
No, don't, don't ask them. Just invite her to speak, the first meeting of the month, first Tuesday of the month. Please, okay. You want to talk to her, we talk to her.
I'll just invite an email. We also need that. That's all I have.
Okay, a couple pieces of informal information that were in our mailbox. The heavy finance committee is holding a meeting on July 20th, 7:00 p.m. in the town hall to discuss articles for a special August town meeting, financial priorities for public safety, IT, home improvement, human resources, and et cetera, and revenue enhancing strategies. As a matter of identity for the fiscal 2017, line transfers in the budget. Interested? See, the capital planning committee will be holding a meeting on July 24th at 5:30 in the town hall to review the August special town meetings. The planning, the planning commission has given us our annual assessment for per capita for the town of Valley to belong to the PBPC and our assessment for fiscal year 18. It's $826.56. I doubt that's changed much over the few years. And the letters from EverSource withdrawn the plan. We did get a letter from the town clerk indicating that the attorney general has approved our special zoning, our zoning articles at the annual town meeting. And that is all I have. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I got a letter left out, the board is left. The planning board is requesting information about the space we use at the current senior center that is scheduled for demolition, for destruction of a new library. At current, we use the meeting room and our filing room. We don't need to wait until the last minute. There is a great deal of plans and records that, that are required from time to time during our regular meetings. Please advise so as we can take the appropriate steps. Thank you, James Maximus, planning board chief.
Make a motion to decide this, send for the selectmen. Okay, now we have, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Oh, she's not going to make me type it too, huh?
What do you, I don't have a type, I mean. And I don't even have a computer now. They went to crap and it, it shipped away.
Uh-huh.
Just we have.
That's all I have. Move, we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's history, thank you, and thank you, John. You're welcome.